Yep, we'll see if she does. I mean, we've got, there's three of us here, so we can get started to let me on.
One size cold spring.
That's me.
Now I'm having a problem with my mouse. Wow, this is not going well. Alright, so we'll get started. We'll call to order the August 13th meeting of the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board via video conference per executive order 202.1. Chair's remarks, I think not a whole lot of new business. We can move on to the approval of minutes. Did everybody get the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, let me just pull those up. And this is the minutes of the 7:23 meeting. Do people want to give comments here? Or do you want to, we should at least go through them one second.
Somebody's phone.
The board discussion for 37 Fair Street, I was just gonna change gallery entrance to studio entrance because it's, it's, she was quite clear that it would not be a gallery with any public facing. Right below it, it's clear prep. Go ahead.
Hi, Matt, it's Stephanie.
Hello. Okie dokie. Okay, very good. Yeah, you can't, you're not able to log in.
I can't see anything and I, I zoomed, somehow I was removed from the Zoom meeting and I can't re-enter, so here I am on the phone.
Okie dokie, very good. Alright, well, yeah, we'll see how much you can do. Luckily, we have the, we have everybody else here, so we'll at least have a quorum to, uh, because it'll be pretty hard. You have the minutes?
I have the meeting agenda and the minutes, yep.
Okay, so we're just going through the minutes now.
Stephanie, this is Michael. You're very faint, I can hardly hear you.
Yeah, it's a function of the situation.
Okay.
Headset, I will yell as loudly as I can. For some reason, it's the headset with the phone. If it were on the computer, it would be different.
And Matt, which minutes are we going after now?
The 7:23.
Thank you.
Do people have comments on the minutes or where are we?
I think they covered pretty much.
Okay, alright, motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Second, the motion seconded.
Okay, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks. Alright, so we are done with minutes, Michael. So I'll make those edits. Let's see. Okay, reports of members. Does anyone have a report?
No, no report.
Okay, very good. There's been, the correspondence is nothing that you haven't seen, it's all related to the applications below. I think the only other thing is just an opinion on, the first residential site that we built out over at the Butterfield redevelopment. Specifically the B4A and the requirement of zoning conformance to the, to all the bulk zoning table conformance. And then as well as the land, the developer's responsibility to put sidewalks in, which he's confirmed. So I don't know if any of you have heard kind of, you know, talk between the boards about that, but the issue of conformance is clear. The, you know, it does need to conform to the bulk zoning requirements for the R1. And is, and is within the ridge height of the way our current code handles ridge height. I would, it would be great if our code, to me, it would be great if our code, um, you know, went from average grade, but it doesn't, it takes a measurement from one side. So anyway, if you've heard any of those, those are, that's all working fine. It's, uh, there was just a little, a little bit of misconfusion with some communication with some board chairs. So, uh, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to old business. So 20 the Boulevard, we have them on the agenda just in case they have any questions. I'm, I don't, I haven't looked at the participants. Do we have, and they're not on, right?
No, they're not.
Okay, that's fine. I basically just wanted to put them on in case they wanted to ask us any questions with respect to, I had sent them over the neighbor notifications. It's a very large list of neighbors because it's a very large property. So as you recall, we sent them 11 the Boulevard, which is the final building of the Forge Gate condominiums up on the Boulevard. And then the entire, the entire, you know, abutting side of Constitution Avenue, because really they're supposed to be the adjacent properties. And when you're that big, adjacent, it gets big, you know, in the same, in the same manner as your lot. So, um, we sent them that. Um, we sent them, you know, I sent them the email to make sure that they were, getting those things out at least two weeks prior to the 8/27 meeting, uh, which I believe, that should be done. I, I'll have, I'll have to confirm with Jeff to make sure that the legal notice went into the paper this week. We're required to do one week. We, we'd like to do two weeks. And I think with this online stuff and just to probably, you know, kind of the latency of people hearing things, we probably ought to allow as much time as possible speaking to the village attorney. So 20 the Boulevard should be fine, um, and we should be ready to proceed to public hearing. As we recall, last time we looked through all the documents, they identified, as I had requested, they had identified the, you know, the three rooms that they could be renting, where the parking is for those rooms. And then we'll, we'll wait to see what the, what the neighbor feedback is from the, from the residents when we have the public hearing on the 27th. Okay, next is 37 Fair Street, and I apologize, I think something came in, Mary, if you could help me out, but I can't seem to locate it. You did send something over after the last meetings, right? I think it had, it had the screening in it.
Yeah, we sent a revised group of drawings that included the screening on the adjacent property. I reworded some of the nomenclature of the rooms just to make sure that it was clear based on our conversation, because there were some, some discussions last time about, how each of the spaces was going to be used, so I just changed some of the name, name, room name, sure that that was consistent with our conversation and our understanding about how we, this was used, and that was, that was what was in that revised package.
There was something about lighting, right?
Yes, and we included the location of exterior lighting showing a full cutoff fixture.
Right, that's what I remember.
Right. So I think we're, I think we're good to proceed to public hearing. Does anybody see anything missing in the packet or have any comments that they think we might need before we could schedule? Unfortunately, we do have to go to public hearing. Let me take a step back. I was hoping, as we had talked, the applicant had said they were in a hurry and we like, you know, we like to keep people moving. And, but the, the village attorney was clear that we, that we cannot waive a hearing. I'll talk to the code update committee about, you know, having some leeway in that. But in this case, it is, even though it's an allowed use, it certainly is a change of use, change of use either from abandoned or going back to, going back to, you know, a mechanic's garage. But nevertheless, it is a change of use. It's a large prominent property, so it's probably, it's for the best that, that, that he's telling us we need to do that. I think, because we should get the, the neighborhood feedback. To be clear, though, that you're not in the historic zone, so with respect to architectural details, while we will certainly take that comment and we'll listen to it politely, you know, I mean, you're, you're free to kind of build what you want within the code, right? And, um, and I think you're, you're, you know, you're set on your plan, and certainly we've looked at things like ridge height, because that's the only thing you're changing, right? Everything else is, you're staying in the original footprint of the building. So I don't think, I, I'm not aware of anything else that we need. We need to give you, in fact, let me do that now, or I'll do that, I'll do that by email. So obviously, the neighbor notifications are just certified return receipt, legal notices. I'll have to get that from the attorney. The attorney will draft that. You'll give it to the adjacent properties. My feeling is that we would give it to, is to, to at least one on, on the adjoining sides, although the rear, I believe, is the village garage, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so there's the two residential, obviously they should get it. And then, I don't, how does the board feel? I don't really, I don't know how you include Springbrook. Look, we included 11 the Boulevard because it's right at the entrance to 20 the Boulevard, even though the impacts are, you know, kind of, you know, hard to figure what they could actually be, but nevertheless, you try to do the adjacent properties in the blast zone. But I think to include Springbrook, it's hard to kind of figure out where a demarcation, line of demarcation is. I think just the properties directly across.
Yeah, I, I, I think I agree on that. It's sort of directly across where you can see them. Otherwise, you know, on, when you turn, it doesn't really.
Yeah, and Springbrook, and Springbrook's view shed is already, you know, River View and, you know, and, um, the waste treatment, waste water treatment plant, the highway garage, and, um, you know, not that, look, they're, they're, they're certainly welcome to come. And they'll, and they'll get notice of this if they're following it, but I don't think it really impacts them that heavily either. But I think the residential ones that obviously we're, you know, putting what is, and obviously, a light I1 use, you know, it's, you know, it's a, it's extra light, you know, assuming that obviously, as we know you will, you'll deal with the, you know, the, the odors and fumes and anything else coming out of, which is, obviously, you're gonna have to deal with code anyway. So I'll, I'll shoot you, Mary, I'll shoot you an email just with a tax map, just to show you the parcels, and it sounds like it's, I don't really know that we need to notify the village. I don't know who we'd send it to in the village anyway, so I think just the two residential on either side. And then probably the two residential that would be to the south of Northern Avenue there, on Fair Street. You know, there's the greenhouse right on the corner, and then we'll, maybe we'll just take the next one. So anyway, it shouldn't be that many. It should be, you know, somewhere between four to six. And I'll put those together, you can send those out. As with most codes, our certified return receipt, you send them out with a green card. They need to go out at least two weeks prior to the hearing. You come, well, it's interesting, you typically come back to the hearing with the receipt, so I guess we'll have to do that by electronically. You'll just have to scan them and send them ahead of the hearing. And then if you get the green cards as they trickle in, those are good to have as well, that you would just, I guess you would image and send to us. Or I guess you could drop off with the clerk. I'll talk to the clerk tomorrow and ask him how he's doing these, now that we're getting a little bit of contact with the village. The hall, the village hall used to be completely closed, but now they're, they're, they're there at certain times, so it may make sense to still get the originals back, so we can throw them into the file, because it's a big part of, of, of our municipal law with respect to neighbor notification. Okay, all that said, do the members feel we need anything else? Or do you think we're ready to, to go to public hearing for 37 Fair Street?
I think we're ready.
Okay. Okay, so let's, uh, let's look at a calendar. I guess we're gonna have to go about a month out, unfortunately, because I think it's gonna be hard. Yeah, well, either, we can't do it anyway, because it's, we can't get in the newspaper. Let me just pull up the calendar. It's weird doing everything on here. So we're at the 13th, so our next meeting is the 27th, and then the one after that is the 10th.
So, a month from now, 10th of September.
Right. Yeah, I'm, we don't, we wouldn't really have enough time to get a legal notice together, get in the paper anyway, and I think that with, with how, with the delay in like the dissemination of information and the ability for people to look at the documents with the clerk, you know, is limited. So I think we have to allow more time, and that's what the other boards are doing as well. So it would be the 10th of September.
And then, and then what are the steps after the public hearing?
So the, the public hearing is just the board's opportunity to take input from the residents. And again, we're gonna be listening to things that are relevant to our purview, you know, with, like I said, there's no architectural review required, because you're not in either district, the national or the local historic district. We can certainly, you know, people may talk to things about screening, things that we've probably already addressed. I mean, you have a fairly light use, and I think, you know, setting aside the, you know, the, the odors which are, which you're gonna deal with, I don't really, you know, it was not, I can't really imagine how much input we're really gonna have. Right? You know, it's gonna be, it's, it's the typical thing, especially when you have abutting uses that are possibly not ideal, right? But I think your use of this very large structure is probably gonna be the quietest use anybody could ever hope for. That doesn't necessarily mean.
Probably even quieter than residential.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, exactly, because you're, you know, and, you know, so it, look, that being said, that still doesn't mean people, you know, come and go happy.
Yeah.
So we'll, um, we'll just, we just have to take that input. The board listens to that input and it factors into our decision about the application. It's a, it's a requirement of, you know, of village law that, that we work under and actually all New York State villages work under. So it's just, it's, it's the formal process of kind of going through, going through the application and taking, this step is predomin, is predominantly to get, to get the input of the, of the residents. So, but it should be, but it should be pretty straightforward. I mean, I think, like I said, you can't screen on the others on the, you know, on the south side, because there's no, there's no boundary to screen it. You're right up against it. The north side, you're screening, you know, I mean, the, um, the light, the roof isn't directly lit, it's indirectly lit, so it's just gonna be probably ambient light, and if there's an issue at whatever reason, you know, you'll, you know, you're not allowed to have light spillage, you know, over a certain amount of feet, so I think that, I don't think there's, there should be really any issues. Do the, do the board members feel there's anything?
No.
Okay. So yeah, so that's basically what we do, and we should be able to decide. It is unlikely that we wouldn't be able to decide that night and then just, and, and vote on it and make a decision that evening. Municipal law allows you, you know, 60 days, we won't need that. I don't, I think that's why we want to make sure we have four weeks of people having access to the plans and coming in. And because of the limited access and, you know, and things being a little kind of klugey, tonight's no exception, with kind of showing people things and getting people the information they need. It used to be, you know, the, the legal notes would just say, you know, the, the documents are on file at the village hall, and you come and see the clerk during office hours. That's a little different now. So we want to allow enough time, so nobody makes a claim to say, well, I didn't know, right? And I didn't have enough access, and, you know, and then we have to go down a path of, well, why, you know, is our decision sound based on this, you know, this claim? So that's, this, that's what we do. Uh, it typically works in almost all cases. There's only a few that I'm aware of in the years and years that, that it hasn't, so that's really where we should be, and we should be, I don't see any reason why I wouldn't be able to just make a decision that night. And, um, the building inspector can work with you with respect to, you've started demolition or not yet?
We have started demolition.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So the building inspector will work with you, and then we can, if there are things that need to be done, I mean, we can certainly talk to the building inspector if things come up, because obviously, you know, you may find things that need to be addressed. They need to be stabilized during construction, that, but I don't really think there's gonna be a whole lot that really is gonna involve the site plan, right?
No.
You're gonna be doing.
There are things I, there are things that probably should be stabilized that will kind of prepare the building for its future use, and, and if it's okay for them to do that as a matter of keeping the, the property safe and sound in the interim, I think that, that would be helpful to, to make sure. I'll have our builder confirm with the building inspector that that kind of work would be okay prior to the, to the meeting. We'll just make sure everything's on the books.
Okay, and they could just reach out to me. I don't, we're, we're actually starting a new building inspector, which I think will be a very positive thing. But she can reach out to me, just, you know, and we can talk about, you know, things that'll, that'll keep things safe and keep things moving to the extent that we're not getting ahead of the approvals.
Yeah.
Okie dokie.
Absolutely.
Great, but we're excited, obviously, as you well know, to see the building come back to life. So.
Great, I appreciate all of your support and thank you for your time.
Thanks so much. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, so next, we've got 124 Main Street. Okay, so you have all been on the emails. I think going back and forth, we do finally have what we need, which was simply just to look at the prior plan, right? The one that was approved. So we then knew how to process the new application, right? Because the new application is a change to the first floor. Under the use of hotel, you're certainly allowed to have a general kitchen and dining room. This app, this application, when we processed it, was clear that we're, they were not doing any food. All that was there was just a storage closet. I believe it had a sink, just a very small hand sink, and a, and a refrigerator, right? Which is consistent with what Jimmy had told us, the, the owner, was that it would be kind of cold and hot beverages, and, and that would be it. So now that has changed to wanting a general kitchen and dining, which is, uh, you know, it's an allowed use. It is, in fact, though, a change of, it is, in fact, it's not a change of use. I, in speaking to the building inspector today, you know, because we were talking about waiving hearing for a couple of other things, what, we'd started with 37 Fair Street. And he was very clear with me. He said, no, no, you really don't have any, any, any abilities of planning board to waive a public hearing on a site plan review. So since we are amending the site plan, that's a site plan review, but I think there are ways we can kind of work around that to make it work for both the applicant as well as the village. But let's get into it. So we have, everybody has the approved site plan now, right? Is it correct? And that's the one that, that it's, it's the full plan that then has a table on it, and it has the stamp with my signature. Does everybody have that?
With the four rooms in the back.
Well, yeah, well, there's a lot of plans that show four rooms in the back. Yeah.
I have a question, Matt.
Yep.
The, uh, the one with the, the stamp, I mean, I see there's a photograph or what used to be an image of like paper.
Yeah, the last one.
Then there are, then there are PDFs, and so, which, I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking at the emails, and I have them, and there's, is, is it the, is the stamped one, are we looking, are we to consider eight, image eight nine four eight?
No, 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 that is not, that's not a stamped plan.
Okay.
So it's the, it's, it's titled approve site plan stamped and dated 2/26/29. Let me just, let me just share it up here, because we don't, there's, we don't need to look at much anyway.
I, I can't see it, because I'm.
Oh, right.
I'm looking at my emails, so I just need to know what file it is, because I thought I had the correct file, but it's been, the one I, I'm looking at, it clearly doesn't have all the data.
So, and if, and a few weeks ago, I know I stitched, Jeff had sent me some scans, that, obviously, it's a law, it's a full-size drawing, so Jeff had scanned it to me in sections, and I kind of stitched it back together, kind of Frankenstein-like, and sent it out to you guys. You guys have that one as well.
Yep, compiled sections.
But you know what? It's, it's actually fine, because I think, I think that you have the, you have the one that was sent last with the dimensions, right? With the dimensions of the lounge.
I do have questions, because I don't, I don't see all of the dimensions, as I'm trying to piece together and get a bead on the depth of the, the depth of the lobby service area.
Alright.
Lobby, anyway.
Okay, let's, um, hang on one second. Michael, can I share my screen?
You should be able to.
Yep, got it. Thank you. Alright, so just because I've spent hours and hours trying to track this plan down, and Jimmy provided it this week, actually went into the village clerks. So this is it. Let me just rotate this really quick, so we can look at it. Okay, so this is it. Obviously, this is the stamp. People are seeing the drawing, right?
Yes.
Okay, this is the stamp down here, Village Planning Board. It's approved either as noted or approved as drawn, and this is as drawn, and it was signed on 2/26. So what we needed to understand, there was some confusion last time when, when the owner's representative was explaining the drawing to us, I, he seemed to first be under the impression that he had the drawing, and then later was clear that it was not the drawing, and that showed a lot of detail with respect to restaurant equipment, you know, a triple base sink, all of that stuff that not only would we not see it on the plans, if, if I was involved and it came in on the plans, I'd ask them to remove it, right? I wouldn't want it to look like we're approving, you know, of course, you know, equipment models and the layout of a kitchen, and, you know, it's basically just, we really are just looking at the partitioning and the use and the site plan. So now we've gotten to this, which is actually the, the site plan that we, that we all agreed upon, and that was, you know, that was approved by motion after a public hearing, and it was signed off on on 2/26. So, um, I think we're close enough, as we look at this, if you recall, this was just, uh, this was just going to be storage, right? That's what it was labeled on one of the drawings. It's not really terribly important exactly what the uses of these are for the planning board's purposes, because we're, you know, we're looking at site plan. But it, it's clear that obviously there were significant amount of changes made to create the, the food prep area. So we'll, we can switch over to that drawing, which is this one. Let me share this one.
Is that the name of the file for my benefit?
It's, yeah, that's the one that, that you just got today, right? The one that has dimensions? Let me just grab it. I don't know what the name is. One second.
Is this new?
Something like a.
Hold on, hold on a second. Let me, let me just, let me just pull it up. First floor plan. So it's A, it's A105 with today's date.
Okay, thank you.
So. Okay, so, uh, let me actually rotate this. People are seeing the A105 drawing now? Okay, so, um, so the A105 drawing is someone that we got just today, um, late this afternoon, which shows what seems to be very, very similar to the approved condition shadowed down here in the gray. And then the changes. So this is what, this is what I was asking for back on July 9th, to say, okay, when you come in, let's go from this, the lower drawing, and show us this, right? Either put them together, but if that's too much trouble, if you don't, you know, if you don't have a digital copy of the old one, which obviously the new architect wouldn't have, then just, then we can just work from this, which is where we've, where we've gotten to now, so now we can kind of proceed. So, um, this area that was, it was, it was a small little closet here, another small here that was going to be a restroom, and it looks like it was expanded to have, probably have clearances and turnarounds for, for a ADA bathroom. It looks like it was enlarged. All of that's perfectly fine. That, in fact, can all be handled by the building inspector, but the reason that we're, the reason that we need to amend the site plan is the food service and the dining, right? Because obviously, that calls people into the hotel that are not guests of the hotel, right? Because that was never anticipated, and so when we do things like use and traffic and parking and, you know, compatible uses, that's obviously what we look at. So we kind of need to, we're focusing on that. Now, one of the things in the resolution was that you couldn't reduce the size of the lobby by any more than 5%. It, it doesn't look like it's reduced, but there's been so much, in fact, it looks to me like it may have been enlarged. It looks like it might be somewhat deeper. But that's not really, it's, it's very hard to tell, because the plans aren't scaled. What do you think, Clara, as a person familiar with looking at plans? I mean, it looks like it's slightly deeper.
Yeah, it does.
But, you know, so I, I think one thing that we ought to do, I suppose. But, you know, so I think one thing that we ought to do, I suppose, go ahead.
Sure. The lobby is the same. It got smaller, actually, because of the service area under the stairs.
As, as that bumps out?
It bumped out into the lobby, so the lobby got smaller.
I'm sorry, is this, is this Jamie?
Yes.
Hi, how are you? Okay, very good. Okay, so we need to establish that, look, we can, we can talk about that. Unfortunately, part of the approvals, which is why it's important to understand the approvals that are in place, including the documentation of those approvals, is that the lobby can't be reduced. Our, our our comprehensive plan, you know, talks about preserving storefronts on Main Street, and that's, that's what we were working to. I'm not all that sensitive to a foot here or there, but I think we probably should. I had spoken to Stephanie, and I don't know if Clara, if you have some availability or, or if you guys don't want to go together, but just going in just to do a quick run-through and just to look at some dimensions and just to make sure that this is the as-built condition, only because there's just been so much confusion. Jamie was not involved on the original build-out or the design of it. And is now just involved, according to him, you had said you were just brought in to do the bathrooms and the food service, right?
Yeah.
To draw those.
Tiny rooms.
Right, right, yep, yep. So.
Hi, can I just say a few things?
Sure.
I'm Jamie's daughter, how are you guys?
I'm sorry, you're who?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, who? The daughter. I'm talking on behalf of my father.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Hear me good? Okay, great. So regarding the size of the lobby, it's been the same ever since he's had the building. So nothing was changed when we just opened the service area with the food. The lobby's been the same, all that we added in the center, which was by the wall, was just the countertop. So at that countertop, we made that the check-in countertop, instead of him just being in the lobby and it's just empty. All he did was add the coffee station for the guests, which he uses. We don't have people reusing it after each other because of COVID and such. And then it's just the counter space, it's just a check-in area, and we have beverages, which are in the fridge, which is on the side where we could see where it says fridge with glass door, full height display. Okay, so then he has the service area, nothing was knocked down, no construction was taking place ever since the approved plan was in place. And all he did was he added a small fridge in the service area along with a stainless steel table, just to prep and cut on, that was it.
Okay, yeah, well, let's, let's, let's be clear. You know, the planning board is just looking, is just doing a site plan amendment. To say there were no changes in the, in the partitioning is inaccurate. There's, there's not much, but there are some.
I didn't say there was no change, I stated that he added stuff in there. You guys are looking at it as if he changed the whole lobby size and
No, 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 I think it's just, it's like, we're, it's just about a comparison between what was submitted, which is on the lower part of the plan.
Okay.
You have that wall where, where the door is, is straight, and now there's a bump out? That's, so that's just about what was drawn before and approved and what is drawn now and hopefully will be approved. We just have to, you know, ascertain, I don't know, that it is
Gotcha, okay, I was thinking, I thought he did like construction inside where he expanded the lobby and went into the rooms.
No.
I, that was a miscommunication.
It sounded like you were worried about it expanding, now then you found out it wasn't expanded, now it's an issue that has shrunk.
No, no.
No, no, Jamie, I said, Jamie, I said from the beginning, I said from the beginning, if you're going to represent your applicant, right? You need to know what approvals they have in place. One of the approvals in place is that the lobby cannot be
I don't, I don't know what the lobby was
I think the problem is I'm speaking and you're not listening.
Well, you're not listening, because you keep interacting and you keep conflicting your comments. You're the one that told me that I was not part of the original documents, which is true.
I didn't tell you that, you told me that.
You emailed everyone saying that I tried to convince the whole board that my drawings were part of the original drawings, which I never said.
That, that is absolutely what you represented, you can speak to any of the other board members. That is absolutely what you represented. Maybe you didn't, maybe you weren't aware that you were incorrect and maybe this was news to you as well? But you kept insisting that we knew that drawing and that was what was, and that's what was approved. It doesn't really matter, this is all, this is all, this is all water under the bridge. All we're trying to do is amend the site plan.
Okay, yeah, so, so do it. You're looking at little points that I'm not sure would, I mean, basically
Little points are what, little points are what make up the code. Right, and as an architect, and as an architect, you should know this.
As an architect, I'm looking at the spaces that they were trying to build and they were not ADA compatible. I corrected them, so as an architect, I'm just here to correct stuff. So let's take it from there, rather than
Alright, so what my comment was Hold on, what my comment was, so we're clear, is that in the resolution, the, the board was concerned that the lobby would just be reduced. And as I said, in our comprehensive plan, we want to maintain storefronts on Main Street. We don't want them to go dark, right? We don't want curtains to go in them, and we don't want them to look like they're unoccupied spaces or that they're blocked off. So that, this was the accommodation, was this lobby was created. And the resolution was that it can't be reduced by more than 5%, reduced by 5%. You said it was made larger.
You're talking about reduce, are you talking about reduce on, as far as storefront is concerned, or interior rooms?
The size of the lobby, the interior square footage of the lobby. But again, I'm not, I don't know that we're all that sensitive to that. So you're, you know, you're, you're trying to get an answer for a question that we're still not even done asking, right? So you, and I don't, and I, I don't have the plan in front of me, so I can't dimension the, what was approved. I do know in that this, in this, that image that you sent of a, of a photograph of, that was the image 8948 that Stephanie was talking about, that one shows a dimension. That one shows that it's, I think it's, let me just take a quick look, I think it's 21 by, I forget what it was. But regardless, that doesn't matter either. The only thing that, the only thing that survives that, you know, the hearing is the, is the signed and stamped site plan, which is why we needed to get to that. So we have that now. At some point, you know, we can scale the drawing just to make sure, I don't, to be honest, I'm not all that concerned with a foot here and there, but that's up to the entire board to discuss. But the board did have concerns about that, so the resolution was granted that the, you know, that the, that this changes could be made. The site plan was approved, but the lobby couldn't be reduced by more than 5%. But again, that's, you know, that's, that's still in discussion. So I think what we're looking at is obviously just that this, you know, this service area here was added, the wall was bumped out. And again, these are things that are not really germane to the planning board. The interior partitioning and how that is, and the whole reason why you were brought in, Jamie, to make the, you know, the toilets ADA compliant, is what code enforcement does and the building inspector does as they review your plans to be built. There is a new building inspector that's starting that, that will probably have, that we'll need to walk through just to come up to speed. But again, all this stuff, the good news is it's all allowed under the hotel use. You're allowed to have a general dining room, you're allowed to have a general kitchen, and you're allowed to have dining, which is what, which is what we're going to amend the site plan. What we can also amend the site plan now is obviously that the stoop is owned by Jimmy, so it can be added to the site plan. You can get a complete site plan that represents the as-built condition, right? And then you can get them on file, and then there's no questions. So, you know, as opposed to these conversations about, you know, walls moving or not moving. Sorry, one second, I'm not sure what that call is, let me just turn that off. Okay, sorry about that. So getting back to this, obviously, it's in your best interest to have the document, right? So just like the last document, we're going to update this document, and this is the approved site plan. So. So what we're looking at is is this drawing here and the, and the, you know, and the minor changes that were made to a little bit of partitioning and obviously the addition now of tables and showing some food service. And you, Department of Health has already inspected this and given you approval, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay, so. One thing that we should look at really quick is just the parking table, because the next, you know, one of the main things that, one of the biggest jobs that we do here is deal with parking in the village. So this is the parking table that was done by Bill Florence when we did this back in 2018. It was then completed, I think, in February 2019. So the first floor had, you know, had four, four guest rooms, which obviously is four parking spaces, the second floor had five, so it's five. Our review, what's that?
My father paid for eight parking spots. Does that count in bottom and top, or does that just count in the bottom?
What's the question?
The total parking spots we're discussing.
The, on the, on this, on this 2018 review, it was for the nine. One, one is grandfathered in for Main Street businesses. So you get one for free, so you go down to, you go down to eight. So that, yeah, so the planning, and that's total, but that wasn't for this review. This review was just for the four, the four parking spaces, because it was, we were only looking at the first floor. When you originally come in, there was, there was going to be additions to the second floor as well, but there were changes made there and that eventually was, that work was completely eliminated. At least as far as this board knows. So the total required spaces for this application was four. One is grandfathered in, the restaurant was using it, and then flips over to the hotel use, and so it's, it's a park, it's three parking waivers that were bought on the second go-around. So, but what you can see, which makes sense, is that we, there, we didn't count any dining, because obviously it didn't exist. So this, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and this is going to be your maximum seating?
The indoor seating we have is just two small tables, and those are for guest use only. We don't allow outsiders to come into the building or use the bathroom or sit. The reason we did that is because of COVID, and what we're planning on doing is just doing that going forward. The only thing we are going to be doing that is going to be, like, on the outside, I'm still doing the two tables or three tables on the outside while keeping the six feet distance. As far as the food that we're serving, that will just be takeout only or sitting outside, and most of that comes from the hotel guests.
Right, but you only have, you're only showing one table on the plan outside.
Right. For now, that's what he drew, because that's what we have at the moment, because I have the other two tables on the inside.
And, okay, so, so we have Jamie, right? So the, the front entrance isn't, is ADA accessible? Obviously, it's an assisted entry, somebody has to open the door. But are they able to get past all these tables? They need to be shown on a drawing.
Yes, you want to approve it just for having that one table on the side? That's completely fine, because most of the guests are takeout only. When we had the whole rush where people were saying that, like, a lot of tables were outside, we had a total of three. And those tables, as you could see, were the existing basement access floor panel is. That one is from, coming from the chair accessible on the outside area, they go through that. So the other table would be shown toward the fence that we have up. So that way would lead it into the door, which would have access for the people. Does that kind of make sense of how I'm describing it?
It, it does, but, so to Jamie, you've calculated clear path of travel for ADA into the front door?
Well, yeah, originally, yes. There, the front only had the tables up against the building. Or you could have it up against the railing, but there was no intending, I mean, you know, to allow the passage of anybody to go through. So there was only, there was only three tables, two on the very end where it's kind of like the dead end of the railing, but this is before. And then one that was up against the window, allowing passage between the table and the railing.
Okay. Alright, so what, but what we need, and we can certainly you know, we need a plan, obviously, that you're looking for approval, because that's what you're approved for. There, there was no, if you, if you notice What's that?
Okay.
So, hang on one second, let me just share this. So this is the parking table that was given to us December 31st, 2018, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so. Oh, Stephanie, yeah, well. Thanks. Alright, so for the proposed use, we just, this plan was for looking at the first floor. The reason the second floor is on here is because there was going to be work going on up there, but that did not happen. So we're just looking at the first floor, so it was calculated for four parking spaces, just based on the four guest rooms. So what we did then was obviously calculate the parking that way. So I, you know, I, I wasn't clear if I was going to get the parking tables, so I figured we would just kind of talk through it as a board. So if you, if we look at the plan, which is so back to this. The dining parking, which, you know, I appreciate we're saying about COVID, but it doesn't, we don't really have any code that way. We don't really, you know, we don't have any way to, you know, to review and/or approve drawings that way. Who knows, code may change based on pandemics, if, if this keeps, becomes a new normal. But we basically, the way, the way the code is written, it's one parking space per every three seats. So for these six seats, you'd need two parking waivers. Because the lobby, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't count any parking for the lobby. I thought we might have done square footage for the lobby, but I can see why we didn't, because the only people in the lobby were guests that have already been provided parking, right? And I get that people come up on the train, I get all that, and it's, but again, we have to work under the reality of our code, which is that our code basically looks at square footage, or it looks at guest rooms, or it looks at, you know, or it looks at, you know, residences and says, this is the parking that's required, and the planning board is, is bound by the code. So even if we can kind of logically think about, okay, well, maybe they're not coming by, you know, by, by car, they're coming by train, the planning board also, the only planning that really works is planning to the extreme. What if everybody arrives by car, right? And so the village, you know, came up with this idea, you know, payment and leave of parking, these waivers to address the parking issue and use that money for things like, you know, forced vacancy for the, you know, they, they put the meters in down at the, down by Springbrook, you know, over on Fair Street to help kind of alleviate those issues, and that's what those fees go to. It's a little hard to kind of wrap your brain around, because you're buying waivers and there's really no space directly attached to it. But it is the, it is the way that our code is written and that's, and that's what we're working from. So to do the, to do the six seats, it would be two parking waivers, which the villa, you know, which the planning board would, if the board agrees, would recommend to the village board to just issue. And I certainly don't have any issue with it, we just need to know what the final count is here, because you want your site plan to be accurate, so that way anybody comes in and there's no talk about, oh, walls are moved, or this was moved, or tables was added, or things were moved, it's just, this is my approved site plan, right? It makes sure, it will make your life a lot easier, and by internal, it'll make my life a lot easier as opposed to the last month of trying to just even get a look at the site plan, right? And to say, what are the changes from the site plan? So is it, is this where you want to land with these three tables and two chairs each?
Can I ask a question, just to clarify? That you want to have three tables outside?
Yes.
Okay, then, so the, the two tables in the lobby are used only for guests?
Yes.
For, as Matt was saying, we are not calculating new parking space?
No, 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 no. We can't, I know what I'm saying, we can't really, we can't allow for the fact, there's nothing in the code to say that the tables inside won't be used by people outside. That can be your interior, you know, you're, I mean, that could be your house rule, your house rule could change tomorrow. And there's no, there's no, there's nothing in the code that allows for that. The code says if you have a, a dining establishment, right? That you, that you have to provide a parking space for every three seats.
Right, that is where we, I would like to clarify, is so, in fact, Right, that, that is where we, I would like to clarify is, so, in fact. COVID may last for a long time or may not last for a long time, and also, as Matt just said, your hotel. Rule could change, as Jimmy's daughter was saying, no, we won't allow outside guests and so on, but it, you could, so therefore, I could see the reasoning of counting all the seats of all the tables. Therefore, we're looking at five tables? Is that, is that my understanding correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, okay, that, that clarifies for me. So therefore, if we look at a drawing. Of your plans, there should be three tables on the patio there?
Yes.
Okay.
We're still in the process of trying to figure out if we're even going to keep those tables on the inside, or what I was thinking of doing was just adding two chairs just for the guests to like be in the lobby before they're checking, because when, if a guest is coming, they come earlier, I just kind of have those tables there where they just sit and wait. It's not like a spot for them to sit and dine. Sometimes, right now, because we don't have food for them, well, they, when they grab pizza and it's like raining outside and they want to sit indoors, I allow them to sit in there, but only for like an hour or so, and then I ask that, like, not too many people are in the lobby because of COVID and interactions, so they just go back into their rooms.
Okay, I have.
I have a question.
Clarify my question. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Stephanie.
Matt, I have a question. I have a couple of questions, but further to the discussion between Sue and the, the daughter of Jimmy. The tables, regardless of the, sort of the intent or what the expected use of the seats and the tables are, I just want clarity, if there are seats, do they require parking?
That's a question to me.
Do they require the parking inside? So are we counting the inside as a parking? That's what they're all confused on. So I think the confusion is whether or not Mr. Matt is considering, it's counting the inside as, with the three tables on the outside, or is he counting just the three tables he sees?
Well, the only thing we, the only.
My question.
Go ahead.
Sorry, if I could, I just clarified, and this is just for Matt. I'm interested to know if there are seats that are being installed, but described as, oh, you know, maybe they're not going to be used for food or for dining, quote unquote, but maybe people will like get a pizza and take out and hang out in the lobby, right? To me, that's a body in a seat, right? And so. Is that a seat that would require a parking waiver or a parking spot?
What's being shown, what's being shown to us are tables and chairs for dining.
Yes.
If I don't, I haven't seen a plan that shows some, the plan that's being discussed isn't really being shown to us with these three tables outside, and I don't know if they're club chairs or, you know, or, or whatever inside for hotel guests, I don't, but again, we don't, we don't have any mechanism, you know, to kind of say we're, that we kind of understand some sort of policy. We, we, we just apply the code. Right, so if this is a food service area and those are places where people can sit and eat, whether or not it's a stool or a chair or, you know, a bar, a bar counter or whatever, the seats are counted, right? You know, we just did, you know, I think it's Paulette's down on the old tightrope space, obviously there, you know, bar stools around a counter, that, the seats just get counted up, right, because they're food service, because that's where people, and obviously it, it, it does increase the impacts, right? You know, the people come in that would not be part of the hotel, that wouldn't be staying there. Obviously, we didn't count that area at all because it was just that, it was a lounge for hotel guests. Now that the use is different, then it, the parking does have to be added in. Nobody's being penalized, this is, or, or everybody's being penalized if that's the way you look at our code, but this is just the way it get, we have to, we process an application. Right, you know, I think the last, go ahead.
Well, I, so I have, so I have questions about the particular image that we're looking at, at like new, on, I'm looking at New A105, eight, eight, 11, 20. And so right now, there's a lot of, there are a lot of accoutrements included in the site plan that were not included in the original site plan that, that was approved and isn't, isn't part, so I just want to be really clear, right? It's being referred to as a lobby, however, the use that we're considering, this, this, the use that we're considering. For this amended site plan is not a lobby, it's a, it's a dining, a dining room, right? And for food.
I agree, I agree, I agree. If you're gonna, if you're gonna put food service, I agree.
Right, I'm concerned about the ambiguity and the lack of clarity that the way the, the naming conventions on this particular image are, are being used. Like, I would like, if we're going to approve, change a site plan, I want it to be looking like a site plan and not somebody's, like, not a concept for use. And I think that if the tables, if we're being asked to approve, if we're being asked to approve a total of, what, five tables and 10 chairs, I, I want to see that. If we're being asked to approve three tables outside and no tables inside, I want to, I want to ask, I want to call the question about, well, then, what is the dining room that we're, the dining room use that would, we would be approving if there was no dining seating in there, right? And if, and if we are gonna, if we are being asked to approve additional seating on the patio, which is now the real property of the owner of the building, I think that we should be seeing that on the drawing. And finally, I think, and finally, I, I want to make sure that the dimensions are clearly indicated. I don't see depth dimension from the facade to the, to the, the first wall there, that's, you know, against the unit one room, and I, it's not something that appears to be calculable based on netting out the, the precise measurements that are focused on the, the quote service area. So I, I just want to make sure that everything is, everything is clear and, and it's consistent with, with site plan that we would be approving and amending, and then this would be relied upon going forward, so that there's no kind of question or confusion in the future if we have to revisit this, or if somebody else has to revisit it.
Yeah, and to be clear, that, that's my point, is I'm not, I, I'm not buying into the ambiguity. We basically look at seats, we're look, we're talking about a dine, a general dining room and, you know, general kitchen and a dining room amendment. Right, because if you're going to serve food, then there's a place to eat that food. There is nothing in the code that says we won't, you know, nor is there any, you know, that, that says that people from the outside can't come in, right? They can come in, they can buy, but they have to, they have to then leave. And obviously, if things relax with COVID, that may change anyway, but that's not even a consideration of ours, nor would it influence our decision. We basically just count seats, we're the planning board, right? We're either going to count square footage, or we're going to count rooms, or we're going to count seats. So we need to have a plan. The style of chair is still in a dining establishment, in my opinion. I'm one vote, right? You guys will, you know, you guys will look at this your way as well, but without question, we do need to see a plan that is complete. One thing that I would like to understand too is there's the bulkhead door. If the, you know, the path of travel for ADA, which was of much discussion when we looked at this originally, which was kind of tabled because the stoop wasn't owned, now the stoop is now owned, and Jimmy has made the, you know, the stoop accessible, has kind of feathered, you know, a ramp onto that. So obviously, if you're going to do that, you need to have a clear path of travel into the door. I don't know that three tables out, I don't see how three tables out there could achieve that. Lara, do you, I mean? Larry, you're muted. I'm sorry, the question was, the question was to Lara. I, we, we're not, yeah, this, you know, one thing that's difficult on Zoom is that it, it kind of feels like it's a discussion with everybody. We're, we need, the board needs to discuss this, and we'll, we'll call in the applicant, like, in, into questions when we have questions. If we could just kind of hold, you know, the, the questions from the applicant side so the board could kind of discuss this, that would be helpful. And I realize that this is more of a, you know, more of a ambiguity of this Zoom format. Go ahead, Lara.
So three tables outside that still allow for ADA access is, is maybe tight? I mean, it depends on the spacing, I suppose. Are they three small cafe tables? You can't really put anything in front of the passage in front of the door. So could you potentially have, you couldn't really have two tables where you currently have the one table, could you? I suppose you could, because we're not, I mean, it wouldn't be spaced. I don't know, what is the regulation for spacing with COVID? I don't even know if that's part of our purview.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we can, in my opinion, we can't be doing plans based on COVID and these, you know, and these reopening, you know, these.
Worst case scenario, base, not worst case scenario, but let's say best case scenario, there's no COVID.
Exactly.
Can you fit, you could possibly fit two little cafe, and maybe you can't really circulate between the two if you have them over there.
Yeah, it just seems to me that you, on the top of the drawing, you know, where the one table is shown, you can have one on either side, right? And, you know, I don't, that bulk, I don't, that bulkhead door.
You could have a bakery table, like a not two-person table, you could have like a, three-person table.
I'd like to propose, I, I'd like to propose that, that if, that we do a site visit and we do so with the building inspector, so that we, the building inspector is going to be fluent in, in the code and the requirements. And.
Yeah, I think it's important, because obviously this is. Yeah, exactly, and this is, this is, it's a public space, it's a hotel, right? So. You know, and, and obviously, you, at least on the first floor, you want to make sure that you can, you can, you know, welcome anybody that needs to use it, including people that need ADA accommodation. And part of that is getting in, right? There's, you know, if your barrier is to getting in, well, it's, you know, nothing else is really, nothing else is going to work. So it was important to the planning board that, that this was considered, especially with new construction on the first floor, on a building that could be made accessible. We have a lot of buildings that I don't know how you'd make them accessible, you know, you know, they've got elevated, you know, bluestone stoops that are, you know, two feet in the air. You know, and by the time you build a ramp, you know, I mean, I don't, the, the amount of change that you need to do, and that's not a great answer either. Every, everybody deserves access, right? But I see the challenges to that access. That doesn't exist here, right? And so you're already able to achieve it. What we wouldn't want to see is you to put tables in the way that then, that then interfere with that. But that's fine, that's your, that's going to be a code compliance thing, but for the planning board, you need to show us a plan of what you want to do. Right, and then we'll calculate the parking on it. Unfortunately, and I'm sure this is going to be, you know, not well received, but we do need to do parking waivers for the dining parking, because it absolutely invites the outside in. Now, I hear that you're not going to have the outside in, and, but we don't have any way to kind of review, we don't have a way to review a plan that way, nor would we consider it, in my opinion. So do you want to change the, to change the table layout? And show these, you're, you're ending up with five tables, is that right? Five tables, 10 seats? And then as long as, as long as the, you know, as long as Jamie certifies that there's a clear path of travel, you know, from the street into the building?
Can we, um, sorry, I just want to reiterate what you said, the five tables, if, if we choose to switch it to the five tables, you want to count the three outside having the accessibility and such, that's still a total of two parking waivers or more than two parking waivers, just so we know?
It's four, because it's, 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 yeah, because it's, um, you got to round up, right? So for every, every three seats, you have to provide one park, so if you have 10. Then you're up to 3.3, right? You know, 3 point something, right? So you got to round up to four.
Just want to make sure, so that way when we do go through with the parking waivers, we know the total that we're going to be paying for. Just want to get.
Right. Yeah, and I think the parking waivers, I don't remember if they were 250 or 275, so it's not a small amount, but it is a one-time fee, they're not, it's not an annual fee. And it obviously, it, it does increase the impacts. And again, there is logic behind it, I feel like I'm, you know. A mass of rationalization, but that's the way our code works.
Right, no, no, and I see rounding it up would make it easier, so that's fine, not a problem.
Yeah, so it'd be forced, so if that's what you want to do, that, we, unfortunately, we can't, you know, and we're not, nobody's saying we don't believe you, I, I think that's a, that's probably, that's probably a good idea to just not have people in an enclosed space that aren't guests of the hotel. Right, it may make your guests more comfortable. That being said, the code doesn't really even, you know, doesn't really even recognize that. And that may be something that you choose to change later, and that way you're still in compliance, you can do it, you know, you can serve people food sitting down at the table when you need to, when you want to, and hopefully things change and things get better. God help us if they don't. You know, so you may change your plan, and that may be a positive thing, right? To say, great, now I can serve people in here. And then you have those seats to play with, and you can kind of do what you want as opposed to, you know, look, it's hard to hide on Main Street in front of a picture window. So I mean, you, it, all the better to just have a site plan that's approved. I will tell you, I, I'm one vote, I'm not personally all that sensitive to a foot here and there on the lobby being reduced, but we, what we wanted to maintain, I don't know if you were involved early on, if you've, you know, but there was going to be rooms that were built into those storefronts, and the storefronts were then going to be draped. That really looks kind of like blight on, on Main Street. It looks like, you know, something that failed even though it's a success, right?
Right.
So the, our position with the lobby was in keeping with the, the village's comprehensive plan to make sure that the, there was still interaction with the street and the building, right, and it didn't look closed up. Right, so that's all this lobby is. I am frankly not all that sensitive, there is nothing in the code that talks about the depth or width or side, but the board was sensitive, and so we wanted to make sure we had something in there. I will tell you, for me, if it's 7% less or 10% less, I, I, I don't feel all that sensitive to it, I don't know how the other board members feel. I, I think it, it felt to me like it got bigger, but I'm not sure. It's hard to tell because this, again, we don't have a scaled set of plans, you know, I've got a scale here, I don't have a, you know, a plotter. Lara, you have something, I think you're muted.
Sorry, I was just going to say, or you could, you were saying we don't have a scaled plan, but I think also just dimensions, if the original plan was dimensioned as well, that would have been helpful.
Yeah.
So, so that's why it's, you can't, it's, yeah, we just can't make a definitive statement.
And I, how did the other board members feel about this? I'm not all that sensitive about a foot here and there, I, I, the.
Either, I think.
The intent was to maintain the storefront, right? And frankly, I like, I like, I personally like the idea that there are people in there, that it's vibrant, that it's active, and dining does more of that.
I was just concerned, I, I really like seeing the dimension of the corridor, that there's three foot, you know, that the three-foot passage is maintained, that's good, so that would just need to be. Right?
Yeah, if you could, I think that's a good point. So you'd like him to show the dimensions on the drawing just to show the clear path of travel for ADA access?
Yeah, that could be helpful, yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good thing. Then we would, just like we have on the interior, that could be helpful, yeah.
I just want to make sure that like, whatever we agree on regarding like parking, parking waivers and tables is something that we're not going to have like a problem with later on, which is what I liked when Matt was saying how if we agree on the five and we round up to the four parking waivers, that in the long run will be better, taking a look at how the situation is in the pandemic, like if it gets better, that way we don't have issues later on.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you want, I mean, and that's really what we're trying to do here, is really get you an approved site plan that nobody has to look over their shoulder, right? And everybody's very clear about what they're, about what they're doing. And now that you guys own the stoop, we can show stuff on the stoop. The last site plan, we couldn't show anything on the stoop because it was owned by the village. So Jimmy has since closed on that, so if you could show us all the tables that you want. Right, and show a clear path of travel, you know, and I, I'm not even going to say three feet, let the architect say what the clear path of travel for ADA access is, but just show us that it's there, because we would really hate to have a, a new hotel on Main Street that, you know, the people that need access that could use it in one of the spaces that could be at, like Pig Hill Inn, I don't know, I mean, I guess you could do it from the back, but, and the front is like, yeah, I mean, you'd have a ramp that would probably be, you know, I don't know, probably 45 feet long with the grade there. You know, so it's, uh, there, this one can be made accessible, and you've already done that, so let's not kind of muck it up by, you know, by putting a bunch of tables in the way, but I'm sure you can fit, I, I, it looks like you could probably fit them in. But just kind of, just show that on the plan, just so we're, because that's really what the planning board looks at, we look at, you know, general life safety, we're looking at, you know, we're. We look at, you know, general life safety or we're looking at, you know, we're talking about ADA. But the rest is all going to be for the building inspector and the coding, you know, code enforcement officer to kind of figure out that everything's fine. Just the way Jamie took care of the ADA access and the building inspector, you know, worked on that. And that's, and that's obviously, I would think, why that got done. The, the, the missing piece here was just the planning board didn't update the site plan to show the food service, right? And the dining, which is why we, which is why we're here. We can do that, get it all buttoned up, get a new plan on file and then, you know, and then you're good to go. So if you could just resubmit a plan that shows all your tables and the, you know, and the path of travel for, you know, for ADA access. It looks perfectly fine in the lobby. I mean, it's wide open, which you're going to need. And then, but then whatever you want to show on the stoop, because now that you own the stoop, you can actually show us what you're doing out there and you can, you can get it approved. And nobody, you know, nobody, uh, nobody can complain about it at that point. Well, they can complain, but not to, uh, not to any avail. Yep.
Maddie, I have a question. With, with respect to, you know, pursuing, the applicant is going to apply for, for parking waivers. At least that's what I'm, I'm understanding here. And we know that for, for parking waivers will account for 12 seats, right? And that would, that could be six of these tables. And so I just want to be clear, is the applicant coming back with revised drawings that is adding, it is going to show off six tables? So that, you know, in the event that, or, you know, when things open up. You know, there will be a, a direct corollary between the tables and the number of parking waivers?
Well, no, it's just that, it's just that if they, if they have five tables with two seats, that's 10, right?
Yeah. Oh, I understand the math, but I also, I know that also if they do get those four parking waivers, that is, that represents a, a potential of 12 seats. And which is good for the applicant, but their plan might not reflect the, the 12 seats. And that's, and I thought that, I actually thought that that's what you and the applicant were talking, exchanging on earlier. Is the idea that there may be more seats inside, more than these two seats.
Eventually, at a future date, there might be more seats. Or do you want to keep the number of seats as currently shown? I think the, so basically, yeah, just reiterating what Matt said earlier is that the parking is calculated based on the number of seats. So if you want to maximize the number of seats on the inside and the outside, then you maximize them and then you can adhere to that. Even if you're not doing that now, you can do that maybe at a future date. Or you just kind of split the difference and decide what feels comfortable for you. Is that what you're saying, Stephanie? Sorry.
That's, thank you. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying leverage your parking waivers.
Yeah, no, it is.
In future, when you add a, a table inside, there's no question and there's a direct, there's a direct relationship to your approved site plan. Because you have those parking waivers that support them.
Yeah, because the math requires that you round up. You could do up to 12 seats, right? So if you want to show 12 seats, that's fine. But to be clear, what's approved is what's on the site plan. So it would be best if you anticipate doing 12 seats to just show the 12 seats now.
Even if you're not doing it, even if.
Even if you don't do it, yeah.
Now, but that way you have the freedom to do it at a.
Yeah. It's just, just so the site plan that you have on file gives you the maximum flexibility. You've, you know, look, it's, unfortunately, it's, you know, 0.66 of a parking waiver. But, you know, you go over at all, we got to round it up. We can't round down, even though it's below 0.5, right? You know, it's 3.33 to get for 10 seats. So, yeah, so if you want to show 12, I mean, obviously you could put like a four top inside. Probably in either of those corners and be fine with respect to clearances. And you could show it and not use it. And I don't, I certainly wouldn't have any issue if the difference is inside or outside, right? The two move inside, the two move outside. It's basically just that the seating is there. Because again, you know, this is all just about impacts, right? It's impacts to infrastructure and parking and how many people it invites in, right? So, yeah, you do have the opportunity, since you're already buying, you know, 2/3 of a, you know, 2/3 of a, you know, of a parking waiver to just add those two seats anyway. If you, if you want to show 12 seats. But again, let's just make sure that you're showing that you have a clear path of travel on the stoop to, you know, so people that need ADA access can actually get in and then move through the space. You've done, but, and Jamie, that's what you were saying with respect to the, the rooms are all ADA compliant? Is that correct? Or you've made some that are ADA compliant?
Yes, it had nothing to do with the rooms, but according to what I saw there, you know, handicap.
Okay. All right, so if you, if you want to submit those plans, we can then, unfortunately, we're going to have to do a public hearing. The, the building, you know, the, the village attorney and I were speaking today and predominantly about 37 Fair Street. We started with our ability, the planning board's ability to waive public hearings, which we may want to consider taking up with the code update committee. But in this case, you know, with the way the current code is written, any site plan review requires a public hearing. So we will have to schedule a public hearing. We can do that on the same date. We probably put you on the agenda in two weeks to then just make sure that the drawings are clear.
Can I beg up for a second? Now, from, from what I'm understanding, Jim told me that the three tables on the outside were, two of them went inside, which is what I showed on the plan. And now I am understanding that Jim's daughter wants to have six tables?
Five, right now.
Or five, five tables?
I think that's what.
What's the difference? Well, the, my understanding was to put the tables on the inside for the COVID situation. Those tables were from the patio. The lounge was intended to have sofas and that kind of stuff. So if you're adding tables, is the sofa go away?
So these are.
Because that's the, and then the other part of that question is, is the sofa also counted?
Sofa was not counted. You're asking if the sofa as a seat was counted before?
No, no, I. Again, I'm, I'm talking as an outsider. All I thought was that area was supposed to have lounge, you know, like sofas. The chairs that are in there now that he wants to use were from the outside, the patio. Those two tables totaling four chairs were put on the inside for the COVID situation. So now we're adding three on the outside and two on the inside. I'm just questioning Jim's daughter if they're getting rid of the sofas.
Um, I think.
I mean, because, because I, I thought this was a lounge. You, you, someone questioned about it being a lobby or a dining room. It's not a dining room, in my mind, but everyone's calling it dining room.
Well, I, you know, frankly, that's not terribly convincing when you're asking where the sofas are. So I think you need to decide, you know, discuss this offline with your client and come back to us with, with plans. It is, it's kind of odd to be, to have a representative, but yet the client and you're not on the same page.
I think we're just all confused regarding.
Well, we're on the same page. That's why I'm just bringing it up because now after hearing everyone talk, you guys are changing it as we speak. So now there's, instead of three tables, now there's five tables totaling 10 seats. So I'm asking what hap, you know, I'm asking Jim's daughter what's happening to the lounge. I think we kind of forgot about the sofas.
I think.
So we're trying to be on the same table.
Can I? Yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I just want to clarify, I just want to kind of diffuse. I think, I think part of the, our, our role is to sort of explain a little bit of our, what is it under our purview and what codes we're following. And I think what we clarified today is that depending on, you know, the parking, the part, what we really need to make a determination on is how many seats are going to be potentially in the space. And because that is relevant to how much parking needs to be provided. And I think that clarification was made today, you know, and, you know, it's something that we've also shared before, but things, sometimes things change and evolve in terms of who's involved on a project. And so now that the clarification is there, I think maybe the client might want to shift what they're proposing in the site plan so that they could have, you know, not have to revise a site plan should they change and, and want to maximize the number of seats allowable as long as clearances are, are available. So I think, you know, nobody's changing anything from like a code perspective or a enforcement perspective or any of that. It's just about, yeah, there might be a shift in the understanding. Does that, does that accurately represent what's, what you think? What's your name, Jimmy's daughter? Dima. Does that accurately represent where, where you are in terms of your understanding?
Yes, I think it was just confusing when it says like service and then it says lobby because earlier when Stephanie had stated that it was confusing being labeled a lobby when it's turning into a dining area. That wasn't the intention of turning it into a dining area. But I see everyone's point of view of how this, like, the use is changing, that now there's food being provided. The intention of my family was to just provide food to sell out as like to go and stuff to help us during COVID and all that. It wasn't the intention to open up like a restaurant down there, like a dining area. I think Jay's confusing it where he's thinking the lobby area is not going to have any tables because it's going to be a sofa where that, like the guests are checking in and it's a lobby area. But when COVID happened, we moved those tables inside. So it was, now it's looking like we only have the three tables.
Yeah, things like that happen all the time. Changes happen, you just have to approve the site, you know, the site plan has to be amended. Is that correct, Matt, as well?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, so, so we're, I mean, we're obviously, like Larry was saying, we're just explaining the code. We're not advocating for anything, right? We're, we're basically just trying to explain what the code allows. And so, you know, the way, the way that, that dining is counted is, like I said, it's one parking space for every three seats. So that's what we look at. And if the, if there's food service in the area, it's, it's, it's all the seats. Right? You know, so I think that if that's what you want to do and that's what works for you, then that would be the best thing to do with your plan, which is to come, you know, which is to just revise the plan and show all the dining that you want. If you, if you're, if you're thinking that five is what you want, two on the inside, three on the outside. And the math requires that we round up the parking waivers to four parking waivers that would allow you for 12. So if you want to show 12 and still can show clearance, that's even, I think that makes more sense. If it were my application, I would, I would maximize that because I have to buy the park, you know, the 2/3 of a parking waiver anyway. And then again, you have the ability to change that. Should you then want to remove tables, you know, put in sofas? But, you know, you'd at least be clear to do what you want to do.
Right, I want to get the approval on having the maximize that's allowed. So that way we don't have to come back later on where we're like, we're moving a table from the inside to the outside. It's now a lobby area. Or I don't, I'm only doing two tables outside instead of three that, which we agreed on, like stuff like that. I don't want it to be like coming back later where we have to submit another drawing or show something. We're just very eager to open up. So I, I want to do it the right way where we're going to have the approvals. So that way it doesn't come back or if my family decides to, you know, let's just make it a lobby area, foods to go only or food served outside only. We're not come back and we're like, you know what? No, the guests are actually sitting indoors. No, the guests are not. So playing it safe with those spots, I think, is the best option. And we just want to get moving with it. We're just going to get working. I think everyone's just tired of being home. We just want to work.
Yeah, I hear you. Yeah, so, so it sounds like what you want to do is just, is to put the tables onto the plan and send that, and give that back to us?
Um, if that, yeah, that's what I would like to do. I just, I want to know when the public hearing would be.
So we could, we could schedule the public hearing for the same night.
September something.
Right, yeah, for the one that we did for the other, what was that? Let me just pull it back. September 10th.
So as of right now, what I think we're hoping to do is just serve the food to go only with having no seating area or anything until we get the approval in the public hearing from the town on the 3rd, or is it the 10th or the 13th of September? Because by the time that day comes, I'm, I'm not trying to like get you guys to bend the rules or anything. I'm just saying, my family's trying to have an income. We're trying to just, if it means that we don't want us to have the tables right now and you want me to wait to get the drawings done for you with showing the maximized seats, that's fine. We can go ahead and submit that. You want the parking waivers to be paid for, that's fine. We can do that as well. What we're looking for is just to start the business, even if it means just doing it to go only. You want no chairs, no tables, no nothing outside till you guys approve that, that's fine. Not a problem.
That's funny, actually, that's, that's something I was thinking of. And I don't know how the board feels about it, was that, you know, because you're in a tough position. And let's, let's be clear, and this is not to penalize anybody, but, you know, it's, it's, it's a position of your own making, right? That's, and that's not, that's not to, you know, rub salt in the wound. It's just that, you know, we've been asking for this for over a month. You know, it was, you know, like I said, and again, what's that?
Here, I was at college. I went to college. It's very hard just trying to get, understand everything while my father's calling me. And it's like, I've been trying to sit on these meetings to try to understand. And so I can explain it because I think it's just a whole miscommunication between everything. And I was looking at emails and I'm like, I'm trying to understand it all, but again, this isn't my field, so.
No, 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 and that's fine. And that's all, look, it's all water under the bridge. I personally don't have any, if, if the, if the building inspector doesn't have an issue with it, it's the building inspector, which, I'm sorry, not the building inspector. Code, same person, but code enforcement officer, right? That looks at this and says, okay, you don't really have approvals for this, you have to stop. I don't, I personally don't have any issue if the board feels the same to talking to the building inspector and saying, they do it with no tables, right? It's the tables that invite the guests in and increase, you know, and increase, and increase all the impacts. With the understanding that obviously there's no guarantee that the public hearing goes a certain way and everything's approved. I don't really see any issue with it. It's all allowed uses, it's part of hotel. I don't know, you know, I mean, as long as you're complying with code, I, I think that's fine, but I'm, I'm not, you know, kind of going to talk about how the entire board will vote on an application. But there's nothing in here that isn't really allowed under the, you know, the hotel use. So I, I mean, I get, I get why you're in this position and I get why it's a very difficult position. You know, because it's a pretty difficult time for everybody. So I, I would be willing to consider talking to the building inspector about what you just, which is funny, which is what you just suggested, which is just no tables and chairs, which obviously invites the people in, which obviously creates greater impacts.
The only.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
The only reason I'm suggesting this is because come 10th of September, when we do like go through again in two weeks with the drawing with the new table and parking waivers and everything is covered, season's going to be done. I mean, everyone's going to be going back to school. Everyone's going to be hopefully returning to work who hasn't returned to work yet. So we're just trying, you know, to do our best to support the family. I mean, my dad's got me and my brother going to college and that's not going to be an easy thing for him if he doesn't have an income, you know? I, I'm just looking at it to be like, I understand the codes. I understand there's stuff we have to follow. But if the tables and the chairs are going to be something that's going to hold us back right now, we can continue to go through with that. I just would appreciate it if like open and we just allow pickup and to go only.
Yeah, and to be clear, the discussion that we would have about that isn't a commitment to do anything. Because it is entirely up to the code enforcement officer.
Okay, and how would that go through with him? Like would, like when would he come and such? Like, when would that place?
Well, let me, yeah, let me, let me talk to the board really quick. So how do you guys feel about this as a possibility? Just the selling of food and beverage, but no chairs until we hold the public hearing to allow them to have some operation during season?
Personally, I'm not against it as long as the, the department, you know, the health, the whatever, all those guys have no problems. I don't think it's our job to approve business going what way. Personally, I have no objection. The, the only thing is just looking at the parking impact. If that impact right now does not affect anybody, then I have no objection. Again, I don't think it's our board's job. Again, I don't think it's our board's job to approve how a business goes on.
I think I agree exactly with what Sue said. I think, so which means also with what Matt said. I think as long as, you know, it's something that just would have to be confirmed as okay with the other departments, but I think from our perspective, if there's no tables with chairs, if there's no seating, seating is what affects parking, which is what is under our purview. So if there's no seating right now, then, until, until we review the plan, and then the seating gets, can get installed, then it would be fine.
Stephanie?
That work, you know, that works for me. I, I actually, I, yeah, we.
Yeah, and again, I don't, again, go ahead, I'm sorry. Sorry, I talked over you, go ahead.
I was just gonna, that's all right, I was just gonna echo that, you know, whether it's takeout or not, we're just simply, we're approving the change of, change of use to include food service and dining, and how they use that space is, you know, they're, they're free to do so. And so I just, I just want to make the point again, that I think if we're documenting this, so the document, I feel like the, the document needs to be, be clear and austere in its details. I don't think that we should, there should be any suggestion that we're approving equipment. And so I, I would prefer if those items were not labeled and were taken off, and that it's clear that the, the space, whether you use it right now for a dining room, because it's dining, and that's, that's what the code refers to, and that's what you're entitled to under your hotel use. I, I'd prefer that it say that, so there's no question in the.
Did it say dining and lo, dining lounge?
Yeah, that dining and lounge, right, because we're, because the as-of-right use that we are papering here, and after the applicant had said, I'm not doing food anymore, now we come back and he's saying, I'm doing food. But the good thing is, is the hotel use includes food and dining and can be done. I want that to be documented clearly, because the approved site plan that we approved in 2019 had no kitchen and no dining, right? And now we're contemplating food, you know, kitchens and food prep and dining, that's, that's the as-of-right use. It should be, I believe it should be included in the site plan, because that's what we're discussing here.
No, that's good, that's fine. I think it, it makes it clear to just say that it's, you know, it's the, you know, dining slash lounge, or, you know, and you can do it, you can use it for either. To show, show the tables, we assume you're gonna show 12 chairs, so you can max them out wherever you want. And, and again, to be clear, what I wanted to discuss with the board was to, you know, whether or not, whether or not there's an avenue to reopen, the food service is up to code enforcement. My, what I'm offering is just the, is just the, is just the offer to speak to them and say that the planning board doesn't have an issue if it, if it starts back up, as long as you just remove all the seating, right? The tables and the seating that are kind of inviting the people in and, and parking the folks there, which then means obviously their car's parked somewhere, or maybe it's not, but again, we manage to the extreme, which is, you know, you know, and that's the way parking, you know, and planning boards work, is that there's calculations based on, you know, if there, if there are three seats, either, you assume there might be about one car out there, right? So, and that's, you know, it's not a perfect, nobody, nobody would maintain that it's perfect, but it's the way our code works, and it's, and it's better than nothing, because, right, because otherwise any impacts can be overwhelming. But I'll, I certainly have no issue speaking to the code enforcement officer, who is new, by the way, to just say that the planning board has no issue, and then it's up to her to decide, you know, if she wants to kind of lift this. And you can speak to them directly as well, Dima. I, Dima, I think it'd be great if you spoke to them, just kind of what you're doing.
Sorry, I cut out, could you repeat that?
Yeah, just, I think it'd be great if you spoke to them, you can call the, you can call the code enforcement officer.
Would you mind providing me with the number?
That's a good question. I guess it would be the Village Hall now, right, Stephanie?
Yes, it would be.
Yeah, so 845-265-3611. They're part-time, we were using the town, so now we're going back to our own, and it's, it's part-time. But obviously, available by phone.
Do you know what I would ask for? Like, is there a name, or do I just?
I don't know the name. Do you know the name, Stephanie?
Well, I know her first name is Charlotte, but I have not.
The last, her name is, I know her name, Charlotte Mountain.
Okay, great.
Like what came to Mohammed.
Wow.
All right. The mountain, Charlotte name.
I like, when I read her name, I liked, I remembered that too.
Okay, great. All right, so we can put you guys on the agenda for two weeks from now to, so we have all the plans, and confirm that you'll be ready for public hearing on the 10th. Because we need to, because there's been so much confusion, and obviously, you know, you're still, you know, Dima and Jamie obviously need to kind of sync up on what this plan is gonna look like.
Yes.
So obviously, it's gonna be these, I, I assume you're gonna show these, anywhere between 10 to 12, you know, dining seats, and you're gonna relabel the lobby as dining slash lounge, the service, what's that?
That change, the service area, do you want that name changed?
No, I think service is fine.
Okay.
Anybody? Lara? Anybody? Good. Yeah, I think it's clear that it's, a triple base sink always means food and drinking, right? Because that's what the health department wants, those triple base sinks, so. All right.
And parking waivers, I wait on that for the next meeting, or?
No, so what happens is, we, at the next meeting, we'll make sure that you're ready for public hearing. And we, and we can do that in advance. If this, if you email the plans, we can kind of look at that. But then the board will all look at the plans to make sure that we're ready for public hearing, which is basically what we're discussing right now, just to show a plan that is exactly what you want, that we've reviewed, and that we go get the public, public's input on, right, which is gonna be these, you know, anywhere between five and six tables, right? 10 to 12, you know, 10 to 12 seats, the lobby is labeled, you know, is labeled dining slash lounge, services service. And then we amend the site plan, right? And because these chairs were added, then the planning board, then will calculate the parking table, right? Typically somebody applicant, but we just wanted to kind of help you out here to keep this moving, because there was so much miscommunication. So then what the planning board does is, if the application is approved, the planning board then writes a letter to the village board to say, we recommend the issuance of these four parking waivers.
Okay, and as far as the, the hearing, would that be done ahead of time, or would that have to be done when, for the next meeting? Like, is there a way we can have the public hearing be done now? That way, next time we submit on the next board meeting, we just submit to you guys the drawing with the changes that were asked.
Yeah, no, it has to be that, we have to confirm that you have everything that's needed for public hearing. And then what, what, what a big part of the public hearing is, is really, is the residents' input. And what that requires then is public notice, which is again, kind of what we're talking about 35 Fair Street, you gotta send out certified return receipt, a legal notice. We did a public hearing on the first change of use. And so then those people then need to have the ability, the residents need to have the ability to go to the village clerk and ask to see the plans, right, what's changing, right? So that's why it all has to be done in that order. So no, the public hearing is what happens last.
Okay, thanks for explaining.
Yeah, no problem, but then we can, and it's, it is a really important part of, you know, everybody be, you know, look, we all kind of live in this village together, everybody kind of pays the taxes, and, you know, so there's supposed to be this input as to what it feels like and how the code is applied, so that's what the, you know, the input is for. And so to do that, the plans need to be complete, the bill, the board needs to agree they're complete, then the village clerk needs to have them, so then if anybody wants to come and look at them prior to the public hearing, they do that, and then they say, you know, they have comments, or, or nothing, right, or everything's fine. So that's the, that's the order that it happens in. But again, if the code enforcement officer will let you operate without the tables, it's really just a question of when you can put the tables in place, if that, if that were to play out that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. All right, anything else? Okay, and if you guys have any questions, just feel free to shoot, to shoot me an email. I guess we'll move on then. So there's no new business. Do we have any public comment? I don't think we have any public, right? No board business. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
They're moved.
Very good. All in favor? Aye. All right, thanks, everybody, have a good night. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Bye.